It's like a sweet and sour Asian.
Asian dream.
Normally, a very good thing.
It's a good connect. It's a combo.
I would encourage you all to the.
Are you saying sweet and sour is not good?
Good evening. I'd like to call the study session to order. Please rise for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tacoma Public Schools acknowledges that we are on the traditional ancestral and historic lands of the Puyallup Tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup Tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. All right, so. Four point part, four point O threw me off on the parts. Study session items, we have two items this evening. Four point one is the electric vehicle progress report and four point two will be the budget update. So I'm going to pass it over to Superintendent Garcia for four point one.
Thank you, Madam President. Board of Directors, we have a few folks with us tonight. We'll go around and do some introductions. I want to remind you in the public, you established three goals in August. And one of your goals was around examining other agencies and their sustainability practices. And we worked together over the course of the year and we tried to channel that into some of the work that we were exploring. And one of the big topics was what is the possibility of electric vehicles? Through some Friday reports, we've given you some background information around different agencies. You have been very active in legislation and asks and grants, and we've examined different possibilities. And so tonight, we are very fortunate to have our Director of Transportation with us and a few of his colleagues, our colleagues, excuse me, to talk to you about what they've learned. And before we get too far down the room, I would like to just take a quick moment to introduce everyone. Ms. Bell will start us off with her name and her title, and that way folks at home know who we are real quickly.
Kristen Bell, Director of Budget.
Malik Benrow, Council for the School District.
Lisa Nolan, Deputy Superintendent.
We're doing the whole day. We just do staff, I apologize.
Rosalyn Medina, Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you.
Chelsea McElroy, School Board Director.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you so much.
Zach Middles, having microphone troubles?
No, no, it's your own.
Nope, you're great.
Oh, great, excellent. Director of Transportation.
Kari Camp, Director of Strategic Financial Operations.
So tonight, thank you very much for those that were helping me along with the names and introductions. We'll go through this, we'll have a few minutes to take some time to answer any questions. And I'll just remind the folks at home, we're not making any decisions tonight. This is information to build background knowledge. That was part of your specific goal is we know this is complex. We know that there are many things that we have to explore, but this is the next phase of our exploration of how do we reduce our carbon footprint amongst the district? How are we looking at partners and how are we looking from lessons learned from other places? So Zach, take us away.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks for letting us come tonight and show you some progress that we've been making on this. So looking at these, as Superintendent said, it was the goal. The business and finance team will determine the viability and most appropriate balance between conventional and electric energy efficient buses by completing a study by June 2024. We will identify recommendations, potential fiscal impacts, and policy implications. So we're trying to keep us on task and on point. The boards request, we had four points. Review any related model WSSDA model policies. Examine at least three municipalities green practices related to transportation. Review potential state and federal partnership opportunities. Interview staff recommendations for action steps. So the Washington State School Directors Association, currently there is no content regarding electric vehicle and model policies. However, there is new legislation that mandates language be added by June 2025. House Bill 1368 states an act relating to requiring and funding the purchase of zero emission school buses. So there is policy coming forward. However, this bill does target buses older than 2007, which is the downside to it because our buses are a lot newer than that. Our oldest buses are 2013. All of First Student buses are 2017. And then the way the state depreciation works is they fall off about every 10, 12 years, and then we get new buses. So from a priority standpoint, we wouldn't be top priority, but I know with the district our size, it is something that I think we would have a good attempts at getting these, this funding and priority. So we did study three municipalities. The first is Pierce Transit. What we've done in studying that is we did see that 85% of Pierce Transit's bus fleet runs on compressed natural gas. 13% are hybrid electric, 5% are battery electric, and 2% run on diesel. Let me know if I'm going too fast.
Can I ask a clarifying question, particularly for those that might be listening? Can, do, would you be able to explain what compressed natural gas means?
Yeah, it's kind of, it's like liquefied natural gas, only it's a different state.
Okay, thank you.
So Seattle has, Seattle Public Schools Board has committed to 100% clean and renewable energy by 2040 for all district vehicles. The city has a goal of planning to have the entire fleet with zero fossil fuels by 2030.
And I have one other question.
Yeah.
You may not have, realizing you may not have this answer. In with the goals between Seattle Public Schools and the Seattle, City of Seattle, I'm wondering about funding for those things. Because those are really large goals.
Absolutely, and I know that First Student, who's also a vendor for Seattle Public Schools, they share half the services along with Zoom. They've been applying for grants and getting awards and splitting it between Tacoma and Seattle. So I know for students on that, I can't speak on their vehicle maintenance or other car services that they have in the district such as with nutrition and things. But I do know that from the bus standpoint, they're trying to get every grant they can to try to, you know, live up to that goal.
Okay, thanks Zach.
Highline School District was one of the first school districts in the state to get electric vehicles. They had three delivered and then they got three more, so they currently have six electric buses. They have charging stations for three. The electric vehicle buses reduce maintenance costs by up to 66%. And they also eliminate almost all engine maintenance. They have 98 non-electric school buses. So we did do a trip up there to ride some of the buses and talk to them about that. And what we found, and this was really insightful, was they don't have issues with the buses themselves, mechanical issues. The issues that they have is charging them. So if it doesn't get a good charge, it's not very efficient. And that's, you don't want to be able to do a morning run, come back, and then have to charge all day to do your afternoon when you only have a few hours before you have to head out. So they said that's where, why the infrastructure has to really be there to get the charge. And we would have to work very closely with Tacoma Power to make sure it would get enough essentially juice to charge that bus up and be as productive as we would need it to be. Anything else you want to add for that visit?
No, it was wonderful to talk to the drivers that were actually using those buses. They loved them. They were, they were quiet, they're smooth, and we took a ride in one and I kind of felt like I was in a race car. I mean, they, they have a lot of power.
Okay, sign us up.
Maybe that's not a good thing for a school bus.
Sign us up.
But I guess I had expected kind of a slower performance.
Like a Volkswagen van.
Yeah, and it certainly was just as good as any of their bus that was out there.
I have a question about, so I've heard some, from some of our other board colleagues in different parts of the state talking about concerns around drivability in just terrain and also weather and that snow and ice, inclement weather is an issue or a concern about how these buses can maneuver in that, in those conditions. Did you talk to anyone about that?
That's a great question. So we did talk with Highline about that, and we've also been engaging with First Student. So First Student has the two different extremes, Quebec, which very harsh winters, and they also have Southern California, you know, almost as hot as it can get. We're going to be the damp climate, which is very different. They're not anticipating any issues and Highline did not speak about any. They, they said that the weather patterns have not affected them in that sense, which is good.
Even, even when we had 17 degree weather and car, other electric vehicles, cars weren't running, the buses ran?
Yep, great question. So the only downfall to that is that would require more energy to get the bus warmed up. So the biggest draw from the battery you're going to get is getting it warm. So something that we're trying to look at too is, let's say, if the driver's supposed to leave at 6:00 AM, at 4:00 AM, can we turn that bus on to get it preheated, connected to shore power? And that way, when it leaves the yard, not only is the driver doesn't have to worry about it, you know, defrosting and getting it up to climate, but you don't have to draw that battery to get that whole bus to temperature. So there's certain things we're looking with on that. And Kari is correct, the drivers that are driving the Highline School District buses love them. There is not, there are not a lot of drivers that are willing to go do it. They're, it's, it's new. And so they get very concerned over that. They're worried about any particular fires or, you know, if they mess something up or anything. So the drivers that are doing them absolutely love them, but they did say that the vast majority of drivers are very concerned with it. And I think that just comes down to education, training, and so on. But, you know, when you look at, you know, the diesel bus and how loud it is and the behavior, you're, you know, you kind of have to raise your voice, but you don't want to scream to get here in the back. You can hear a pin drop on those buses. And from kids in the morning, it really, you know, from a behavioral standpoint, it gets them to school in a much quieter, calmer manner too.
I didn't know Zach mentioned the word fires. There have been no instances in the United States with school buses that are electric having fires. It's a concern, but not a real.
So I was wondering about training, because you mentioned training. Like what is, did, did you get an understanding of how much training it would take a current bus driver going from diesel to electric? Like what, what does that look like?
So my vision would, if we did get electric buses, we'd have to have the manufacturer come out and really talk with the drivers, get with our safety trainers, so they know the inside and out. You're still going to have to perform your pre-trips just like you would with the diesel, but there's certain things you're not going to have to look at, oil dip-stip and so on. So there'd be certain things and kind of, I can ask for student for theirs. As a reminder to those that might be listening at home, First Student will have, and we'll say this on here in a few slides, they're going to have electric buses operational next fall. And they're going to be delivered this June, operational, running the fleet, and so we could, you know, draw from them on how that looks and how they train their drivers and get a gauge.
Thank you.
Absolutely. So Tacoma Public Schools transports most students through one of two methods. The first is Gen Ed, contracted bus services through First Student. There's 115 total buses, and this is a separate bus yard from Tacoma Public Schools. So they have two yards, the main yard is right behind Costco. And then they also have a yard down at the Titleands with, called their charter yard. Our sped services, that is provided by Tacoma Public Schools employed drivers. And we have 72 total buses, 55 bid route drivers. So, and we cover all the sped, First Student does all the Gen Ed. The timeline that we want to stick to, to make sure that we're staying true to our commitment, is by spring 2025, there will be 13 electric vehicle buses in operation. They have also applied for a new grant that will get them even more buses for spring 2025, and they're working on the infrastructure. There's been a slight delay in getting the three buses that they have coming this spring. Essentially Tacoma Power said, hey, since you've got 10 more buses, why don't we take a step back and get power ready for all 13 buses versus have to any hiccups and, you know, getting three up and running and then having to disconnect power of some sort to get them ready for 10 more, if that makes sense.
And that's going to be at their current bus yard?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And then spring 2027, 35 electric vehicle buses in operation. This is contingent on around three of EPA bid. So that is the bid. We'll find out here, I think it's in about six months, but they are bidding for it and they're hoping to get it. And then they would split half between Seattle and Tacoma.
But the 35 would be ours, or is that we're splitting?
Those would be with First Student.
That's what I meant.
Yep.
But we're not splitting the 35 with Seattle, we're just getting 35.
Correct, correct. They, they would be our buses in our district. And the beautiful thing is the money we would get from these buses comes to us, not First Student. So, and, and there's a lot of money to be had there. I'm trying to, what's the name called?
Depreciation.
Depreciation, thank you.
It's that fiscal thing.
Tacoma Public Schools and First Student feasibility study for the Tacoma Public Schools bus yard. So what we've reviewed is current site constraints. So at our bus yard, I want to be politically correct, I think the building's a little past its.
Past its prime?
Past its prime, seen better days. And so we are looking for a new facility. Unfortunately, with the voters, they approved a new bond, so we will eventually have a new facility. What we wanted to be aware of though is we didn't want to pump millions and millions of dollars into our current facility only to be moving in three to five years. So we've been working with First Student on, they, they're the leader in electric, electric buses in the nation. They have more electric buses as a company than others. So they've been able to give us a lot of research and insight and performed a study that we're almost done, they're almost done completing and then will give to us. So what we did ask though, and they came for a site visit, is what could we do with our current facility? And what they came back is, they said you could get a portable solution. Portable meaning we could then move it when we get a new facility or sell it to another district. So it wouldn't be a lot of infrastructure that would be permanent at our current yard. And that would be 35,000 to 45,000 per bus is that, to get the charging station going for those. So that's not the cost of an electric bus, that you're looking at about 300,000 or so. And then there's the transformer, and the transformer would only be if we wanted more than five buses. They think that we could get three to five buses with no transformer with our current setup and to have Tacoma Power hook it up. And then the hookup fee would be 25,000.
Zach, is it 25,000 per bus or one 25,000 hookup to service?
That would be just one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then the transformer on there is if we wanted more than 10 buses, or five to 10 buses, that should be on there, five to 10 buses. And that goes back to the, if you remember, I said we want to make sure we get enough juice to those buses. So we would need a transformer. There is the security sense where there's a lot of copper in there. That's a potential theft. So we have asked about that and seen, you know, have people tried to, you know, steal at other sites. And obviously said we put them in shipping containers, we put guardrails around them, we try to make it as theft-proof as possible. But some people try. So that's just something to consider where we wouldn't want to put all this money only to have that happen, because we have had quite a bit of theft in our yard.
And is that predominantly with the portable solutions or is that for charging stations, like permanent charging stations as well?
Great question. I believe it would be more portable because it's a container, whereas a lot of your permanent solutions is going to be underground.
Okay.
People, you know, will know where to break in versus dig in. Tacoma Power Partnership, where in the city can and can't we house 20 to 50 electric vehicle buses? Something that, you know, we are, everything's on the table for a new facility, including do we share a facility with First Student? If we did share a facility with First Student, and if you think they have 30 buses, we have 20, we want to make sure we can charge all 50 electric buses. That's, that'd be important. So they're trying to work with Tacoma Power to see where, you know, where in the grid we would be able to be successful with and where we wouldn't be. Because that comes a lot of infrastructure that you have to consider.
Can I ask the Superintendent a question?
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, because I know we've had some conversations about a joint maintenance facility with Metro Parks Tacoma, with a lot of the JMAC members. Oh, is it later? We should just wait and let them get through the presentation.
I'm not sure what question you mean.
So my question is, in terms of, of this finding a space, I mean, I know we're not the only ones looking at electric vehicles and therefore charging stations that are needed for electric vehicles. So I just was wondering if the maintenance facility that we've been talking about and with our JMAC partners would be something that's EV-equipped? And if so, how does that play out as a location for, rather than, you know, doubling up with First Student?
So we do have a slide later on the deck that explains a little bit of where we are in that process. The short answer is there's a lot of moving pieces. Maybe this isn't the short answer, this is the long answer, as I said there, there's a lot of moving pieces of First Student, other things that are at play that you should all be aware of, right? We have made, taken some action to, to surplus the property at the Madison site. The current transportation yard is not that, that, on the docket of that, so we have a little bit of time. You heard tonight that it doesn't make a lot of sense to put any permanent infrastructure in there. Zach mentioned this, what is the grid support, right? That is a really essential thing for us to consider and gather first, because that'll have major implications for what we do and potentials and next steps. And then what you'll see a little bit later in the slide deck is some timeline for that conversation around the joint maintenance facility. And that really comes down to is what space is available, what can be developed? What are the other needs of the JMAC partners? And so I don't want to paint a picture that it's, it is going to meet the transportation needs, meaning the, the yellow bus transportation needs, but it could play a role in electrifying some other vehicles that we have.
Maintenance vehicles.
In that space. And so this is a really exciting topic because we are kind of doing the right things at the right times, which is what are all the possibilities? What are all the questions that we should be asking? It is in the queue, you know, and there's some unknowns that, you know, we haven't, you know, so what, how long will these last? Right? What do we do with the batteries when they're done? Do you need to buy new batteries? And so we're learning with the rest of the field and a lot of questions, and so I'll pause there. That's my random saying of maybe.
Okay.
I could have started there.
I love it.
That would have been the fast answer.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry. With the Tacoma Power Partnership bullet point, it makes me think about scalability. Like, so if I would ima, if, if we are striving towards this, like one day striving towards a goal similar to Seattle Public Schools, right? Like wanting to have all of our vehicles be electric by a certain date. It seems like that's going to be more than 20 to 50, like that, that, that there's going to be need, the need of scaling. And so I'm just curious about if there have been those conversations too.
There have not, because we've just been focusing on the 20 to 50, but that would be absolutely somewhere, you know, could we eventually get to 100 and then 200 and so on.
I think, you know, as we go down this road too, is we have to explore other opportunities, right? Pierce Transit, and what role do they play in our transportation system, right? And so, you know, around even the simple, and I haven't shared this with Zach, and we're exploring the conversation with, can we, what do, what does their rider vans look like? You know, can we start to coordinate some, the more that we can reduce the number of vehicles on the road at the same time, at different times, is another part of that equation. And so if the board is open to the appetite at some point down the road, we would also look at where can we potentially reduce or collaborate and reduce some other redundancies? Other things, you know, that for at least the foreseeable futures, there will be some, I'll call them gas buses, that we still need. You know, how long can you travel, right? So when you hit the post sec or post season for high school sports and, you know, stadium high school baseball team that just went, you know, 12-0 in baseball, as they have to travel down to Camas or to East Wenatchee to play, what does that look like? What are those, you know, does that school district have a place to charge? And so there's so much more to, is just as simple as, here's the, the overall, at least from my perspective, what we're learning of, how do we build this robust, comprehensive approach?
Agreed. All right. So our internal timeline, spring 2024, First Student study will be complete. And then by spring 2027, we would like three electric vehicle buses in operation. And by spring 2029, 15 electric vehicle buses in operation. This is contingent on applying and winning grants, which I do think we would get priority because we don't have any internally. And we've been working with Courtney, she's keeping an eye and will be taking a look to see, hey, we can go after this one. We want to make sure that the grants that we can achieve what the criteria that they set forth and say this is what you have to achieve and everything. But I think we're in a better position now than we were six months ago to say, hey, we can do this.
And two things I think along with that is that the grants require you to have those buses in service within 12 months. So you would have to have some place to put them within that time period or it's not worth doing the grant. And also these buses are about three times the cost of a diesel bus. And so without the grants, it would be financially something we wouldn't be able to do.
Since we're talking about grants, Courtney, or Kristen, sorry. I heard Courtney's name and then Kristen, so pardon, sorry for that. I know that when the infrastructure package was first passed, that there were, there were grants for electric buses, and maybe this is more of a Roz question, but one of the issues that I know that we had when we're talking with our federal relations team is that they, they, the grants were written, but they didn't actually fit the needs or the require, or school districts couldn't actually meet those requirements, just the way that the grants were written. Has there been an improvement to how the, the grant requirements?
The last grant that we weren't able to, you know, try for was really more of an out, an us issue. Like the infrastructure issue for us was we didn't, we didn't have the capability or necessarily even have an understanding of whether we could install the equipment on our site. And so we, we had, you know, I got a call from someone at the White House, I don't even remember who. And we had to have the conversation of we're just, we're just not ready right now, because we just don't know the answers. And so that's prompted us to, to have a better understanding. If that were the case today and the grants were written the same way, I think we would be an eligible applicant for that. And, and we would be more competitive because we have a better understanding of what we can do, where we can do it. You know, portability adds a whole nother component to it, so, you know, those things look different.
And we partnered with First Student as a piece to that. So that's where, that, as Kari mentions, to be in service the first 12 months, that's was the kicker. We wouldn't have been able to be in service. And so First Student, as our partner, they, and we wrote letters to support their application, and so that's the exciting thing is.
Yeah, and I remember that being kind of the workaround for this, this particular grant, like, well, we can't actually qualify that or we're not in a place to be able to do that, but with that partnership, I know that that opened up some creative, there was a lot of creative thinking around how to approach that.
You know, and I'll go back to is, we have a, the way I would describe it, and this is not a technical term, a hybrid transportation system. Meaning First Student is still part of our transportation system, we just subcontract them to, so when we get those First Student buses, they're part of our goal in that space. Our largest number of riders come on those buses. And so what I mean by the hybrid, and then we have our own fleet. And so that's kind of a, where I would just encourage us to recognize that we really did participate in the grant. We just did it through that other vehicle in that space. Still meets the same goal of less buses in Tacoma.
Well, I'm thinking just in terms of like us being the pri, like the applicant versus First Student taking the, and I know that like there was just a lot of strategizing and thinking outside of the box in terms of finding a way to, to go after that grant and be eligible for it.
And I would credit our First Student partners with, you know, picking up the lift in the beginning, because I think that this was something that they were really driving for as well.
So state and federal partnership, we have opportunities right now, we are closely monitoring with the Washington State Department of Ecology Zero Emission School Bus Grant Program, the U.S. EPA Clean Bus, School Bus Grant Program, and the Washington State Department of Commerce Clean Energy Grant Programs as well. Considerations that we have to take into account for is timing, cost eligible for reimbursement, district cost share requirements and funds awarded on a competitive basis, not assured. I want to call out, I know Kristen's doing her job well, because when Kari said the buses would be three times the amount, her jaw hit the floor. But yes, cost for eligible reimbursement is absolutely something that we want to pay attention to. And then that depreciation number, you know, we'd obviously get the same depreciation for our internal buses. And so we do think that it would be a big benefit and help us a great deal financially. Any questions on this slide?
Okay, I do have another question. And I think this is a Roz question, it could be a Kristen question. But in thinking of, so the Washington State Ecology School Bus Bullet Point, I'm wondering, because I can't remember, like, are there funds through OSPI with the current transportation, the Stars model? Like where, or not the Star, but like how, has the state allocated funds for school districts to be able to purchase these buses?
So there's this depreciation that we receive, we use that to help fund some of our school buses. And we would receive depreciation back on electric vehicles, and that would be a higher depreciation because they're a higher cost. I don't know that they're provide, they don't currently provide any funds to buy buses, so I don't, I don't see that being the issue. Most of what they provide funds for is for infrastructure and things like that.
For the charging stations, yeah.
Okay, okay.
I, I think they see it as you're going to get your discount, or you're going to get your money back with depreciation. I, I think they see it as you're going to get your discount or you're going to get your money back with depreciation.
Which is over time.
And we've been.
I think, sorry, just one other complication to that, right? So, uh, because we run a hybrid system and we have our internal buses and our external buses with First Students being the external, we actually have to account for those in two separate places. Our internal buses depreciation goes into the Transportation Vehicle Fund, but our external buses, that goes into the general fund. So we'll, we'll, we will get additional dollars and we can do a transfer over, but it's, you know, it's a whole nother thing.
Okay.
We've been active in our voice of the need to support infrastructure, so the lessons learned and so, you know, in that space. And then, you know, when we think about Washington State versus O S P I, I know your question was regarding the Stars and that was the answer, but as you can see on the slide, there are other Washington State opportunities to help us in that space. You know, and we're talking specifically about what I would describe as yellow buses, right, uh, tonight? Uh, and that was our charge, but we are looking at different opportunities, you know, we, we have vans. You know, what does the van system look like? I'll remind folks, as no one serves more McKinney Vento students in the state of Washington than the Tacoma Public Schools. And so, you know, as we go down this road, we will be continuing to look at different ways that we can build that capacity. And I think that kind of leads into the next slide.
Great transition.
Right, of those local partnerships.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you. And so we have been examining and and as, uh, one of the tasks of J Mac has been is this, you know, how can we continue to partner together? And over the years, and it's been a long haul, I would say, uh, the local partnership between the this Tacoma Schools, the Tacoma Parks and the City of Tacoma have tried to identify where we can collaborate and what would that look like with a joint maintenance facility? And what I say by maintenance, it's maintenance and operations, but it has huge potential in in several different aspects. And so as we go through that process and you can see that, uh, we have, uh, we've actually moved into beyond the conversation to a study being conducted, like, what is the city of Tacoma really asking? How much space, this is the piece of land, how much can be developed? What is Metro Parks, excuse me, really asking? And and T P S is like in the more flexible space of like, hey, we have some services there. But based on these things, we can either fill in or we might find some alternatives. And so it's not designed specifically for transportation and a solving of that. But it has implications, uh, several different opportunities. And so we're hoping to have the results of that by twenty twenty four, of August, excuse me. Small detail, sometime this year, no big deal, August of twenty twenty four.
What questions may have?
I'm wondering about, um, I realize I've been, I have lots of questions apparently. Um, I'm wondering about other, are there other districts elsewhere that have um, a, a, a large contingency of electric buses? And just wondering, like, if they're, like, outside of just our region, are there other places in the country where we can learn? Like, how they've done that or how it's working for them?
Absolutely. I think Southern California and Arizona have quite a bit, um, with that. So, you know, we, we could certainly learn from them. I think, um, a lot of districts in the state are getting towards electric buses, but I wouldn't say anybody's an expert yet. Um, but that's where our benefit is our vendor First Student has so much experience and they would be able to give us all this information. Um, and and all the experience, trials and errors and stuff. Um, I would focus my time though on Southern California and in Arizona. I believe that's where a lot of the electric buses are.
I don't know if I have a question. I don't know if my mic is on, is it on?
It's always on, these are hot mics.
It's so weird.
I know, these ones are different.
They're different than the ones we have up there.
Okay, so I know about like a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, the city got together and it's like not just in Tacoma, Pierce County, but also place in King County where like now the city transportation is free to youth. And that's how you know I'm a latchkey kid because at eleven, your parents put you on the city bus. And, um, is Metro, or not Metro, is Pierce Transit and Sound Transit looking into electric vehicles as well? Is this like a shift up there leaning towards also as we're talking about reducing carbon emissions and less vehicles on the road? And now it is free for kids, um, not saying that we should put our kids on the buses at eleven with no phones, but we did. So I'm just like, um, is that like a shift that Sound Transit or Pierce Transit is leaning into?
They are, and and yes, um, Pierce Transit, I know, I can't speak to Sound Transit, I didn't, um, uh, look into them, I'd be happy to. But I know Pierce Transit is absolutely looking into a hybrid option or an all-electric.
And then with Pierce Transit looking to that, would they, because that's like their whole thing, would they also be looking into having those charging stations? And so like maybe, I don't want to duplicate services or something like that, like, but if there is a charging station in the city that already exists, would that be something we could like lean into?
And and use or learn from?
Both?
I don't know if we'd be able to use it because I think they'd want to keep it for themselves. Um, I did go to their facility, um, and it's, it's beautiful. Um, I don't think that we, we'd be able to use it though, but I think we could certainly learn from it.
Okay.
It's near Liquid.
Okay.
And I would also say, um, Director McElroy, that, um, Pierce Transit just made a comprehensive presentation to J Mac last week or last month, this month. So I can get you a copy of the PowerPoint, but it was, um, they've, they're committed, they've got timelines, they've, you know, not just for electric. They're just, they're talking about their whole plan for revamping transportation, um, but they do have the facility and lots to learn from there.
I was just gonna wait till next Thursday for Vice President Shroders' report from J Mac about how that went, you know?
Thank you, that's good, yeah. I, I'm gonna go back, that's so good. No, I just tickled me, uh, and that, um, you know, I, I'm gonna keep on trying to elevate and and broaden the conversation because, uh, Director McElroy's, you know, as we, even with Sound Transit, you know, we're, we're putting trains throughout the city. You know, and I know that, you know, on the West Coast, we have this very much, uh, a different feel than other parts of the country about public transportation. Um, and we are very fortunate that, you know, and you saw this in the, the conversation around ridership. And I think we should, uh, we'll, we'll try to bring that presentation back to the public because we want to make sure that we're very explicit about, these are the things that we're talking about. Many of our kids don't ride the bus.
Yep.
When you think about that in that space. And so, you know, as we go through this, you're going to want to think about your comfortability and some levels of that is so our kids can ride Sound Transit, Pierce Transit for free now. Uh, where are those reductions? Uh, where can they, they make the most sense so that we can maximize those? Um, Pierce Transit gets ridership for that space. Um, and, you know, I, I don't think it's as simple as an easy answer, but I do think that you should spend some time thinking about and talking about your, to your constituents. You know, um, I think we're seeing more and more kids, uh, use smaller transportation such as shuttles. And, you know, that's another opportunity to move to electric services differently.
I have a question about that.
My last piece of that caution is, is that we don't know the implications on the backside of what this is going to do uh, with our utilities costs. So I think this is very attractive and people say, well, here's where we reduce this. And and you're seeing this movement, which is a great, but what I do know and just enough to be dangerous is T P U has to deal with all these demands. So as Pierce Transit is developing theirs, as the city's developing theirs, as everyone, there's going to be a queue and there will be an, I only imagine the increase of electricity will be, have to be paid for as well. And we don't know what that answer is. And so I just would say to you, as you think about money saving, it's probably more of a push than, uh, is this the right thing you want to do for the environment? And what does that mean for, uh, things like batteries? I don't have good answers, I just have more problems for you to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doing your job.
I do have two questions, um, one, Josh, so in terms of, I, and I feel like we've briefly talked about, or touched on this about public transit and our students, like, do we have data on, on how many of our students use Orca cards? And are active on our, on Pierce Transit or public transportation?
Not anymore, and here's the reason why is they've moved it, uh, in the pre-COVID days, we actually had this amazing partnership with Pierce Transit. Tacoma Creeds, uh, participated that, City of Tacoma, and, uh, it, it was great. Um, and it really opened the door and we bought Orca cards for all of our high school kids, uh, in that space. When, um, the, the local transit authorities moved to ridership for all youth free, uh, they stopped collecting that, that data in that space and so.
Because your ID card counts, you don't have to have an Orca card. So they don't know anymore. That's a good point.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it would be helpful information to just have that data to be able to know. Um, and then I think this is a Roz question. So the, um, to Josh's point about utilities, um, does, and I, I'm just not remembering this correctly right now, does M SOC? Uh, do utilities costs come out of M SOC?
Yes, we get an allocation for M SOC utilities.
Accurate?
Material supplies and operating costs.
Which is, uh, we got an increase from the legislature this session.
Correct.
Uh, um, um, a modest increase, is that a fair or a moderate?
Yeah, we got it, we got an increase.
Yeah, okay. And so then this makes me think about just inflation and how we've been talking about the inflation and the cost of things. And so if, I, I guess I'm wondering, I'm thinking out loud in terms of like approaching the legislature, like in the coming session to say, okay, as, as we and other districts move towards this, um, uh, green or electric bus goal that is in alignment with the state's, um, green energy goals, like, M SOC is, like, there, there will be need, a need for additional funding.
Potentially, I mean, you're, you're going to save on fuel and fuel right now, their costs are significant on fuel. Uh, but you might have an increase in electric. And so I think that there's a trade off there. I don't know how much electric we need in order to charge the number of buses that we'll have versus how much fuel we'll be able to save for the same another time or, you know, how many miles those buses will actually get. I, I know that from a propane perspective, we, we thought we would save quite a bit and we really haven't seen all of the savings that we had hoped we would see with propane. Um, so, you know, it's, it's probably not so much that we're going to have a savings or a cost implication. More so is just a shift from one to the other.
And I know Director Leon has been biting a bit, I just would offer, here's my, uh, interpretation of what we should be asking legislators to do. All Washington State schools, uh, should be required, and they're moving to this to be green, right? And they've given us a charge to be that space and they can monitor that. At that point, uh, why are we charging public schools utility costs at all?
Yeah.
And so what I would encourage you to be with your constituents and your colleagues is really starting to advocate is to say, hey, yes, we are being moved, the construction, the HVAC, all these green systems. So why are we then paying the utility costs at that as for taxpayers? So I'll pause there and.
So I think very good point there, um, about trying to have the funding come to public institutions that are doing good in a free manner. I think a few points earlier, just looking detail to a kind of big picture. Um, you mentioned, you know, decreased fuel, decreased mechanical costs, I mean, I could just, this is what generally happens to electric vehicles if they're cheaper to maintain, um, they're going to cost some electricity, of course. Um, there was mentioned earlier about fires, I just want to make sure people know there's, it's not common to have vehicle battery fires, like scooter fires, those things happen sometimes, but, um, this is a safe technology, it seems like. Uh, it doesn't seem like it is in the world at this point, so, so want the public worrying about too many, um, things that way. And the temperature, there was, we brought up temperatures earlier, we did get to seventeen degrees this year. But traditionally speaking, this is a temperate part of the world, we're not in northern Minnesota where, you know, battery life is going to be impacted by cold weather. So I think that that's, we're, we're in a nice place regarding our temperature. Um, we've got these great partners, right, Washington Ecology, Washington Commerce, U S EPA that potentially, you know, no one's signed on to give us um, lots of grants yet, but there's potential for all this to happen with the partners that you've talked about already, the city, First Student, or whatever bus company exists that we have, has the best options for our students and our environment. And then really at the, at the root of all this is the health of the environment, which really we're looking at the health of our humans, right? Our kids' health and our adults' health regarding air pollution, that's a big deal. There's a lot of not just asthma, but emphysema, C O P D that is happening, mostly from vehicle emissions, mostly in this country. So I think that's something important for the public to think about and our legislators to think about and help us with, so, thank you.
I just want to add to your point, I know Kari had said that the, about the electric, the fires, that nowhere in, I thought, I heard you say that no electric buses in the state, in the United States have had a fire issue, is that correct?
Correct.
To your knowledge.
To my knowledge, from what we've heard, from our research.
From the research that you've done and leading up to the presentation today. I understand, I understand that, yes, so. Are there any other comments or questions?
You know, just one other comment to add, as we talked about the, you know, how many students, again, this is about, um, about twenty percent of our students uh, use our bus transportation, um, and the other eighty percent do something else, walk or other rides or shuttles.
And on that note, you'll see in a lot of our newer campuses and we're, we're adding, uh, charging stations there. So that it's not like, uh, you know, this is our only approach. I'll just continue to, when we, there's requirements now to do that and that's exciting, but we all are moving in that direction too. So as we redo buildings and upgrade that, there's infrastructure there we're also providing. Good.
One last point, um, we've talked a little bit about what the rest of, um, lots of ways of getting to school, whether it's a school bus, walking, but also public transit, and we, we talked about our kids using public transit. The West Coast doesn't seem to adopt it as much as the East Coast, I don't know what the middle of the country does. But the East Coast, that's where I grew up, there's a lot of, I just, a lot of public transit to get back and forth to school. And it's safely done by most kids in most parts of the world that use public transit, Europe and things like that. There's a paranoia that we may have to, um, just help educate the public about, that look, it's not, we're not boogie people on the bus, they're going to abduct your child when they take the bus, so that's important to know.
Like building autonomy.
Okay.
My last piece to that is, is in, it was exciting, our elementary schools, uh, we still do with, uh, partnerships, uh, gosh, I'm gonna butcher the official.
The walking bus?
Pardon me?
Walking bus?
We do walking bus, uh, what's, uh, on the go.
There you go.
Uh, with the City of Tacoma. Downtown on the go, and so, uh, we just did some, uh, our teams did some additional training, the, the gal, uh, gosh, her name's escaping, it came to, uh, go ahead.
Laura?
I don't, I'll find it for you because she deserves credit, got a tremendous kudos and, and elementary schools specifically are, you know, because we have, we're very fortunate to have neighborhood schools and families do walk, um, to school and do that. And so that's another form of transportation that is being promoted and supported as well. So with that, I'd like to thank the team, I think, uh, Zach, you're the only one that gets to head out because the next topic is relevant to all of us too.
I'd love to stay, guys.
Thanks, Zach.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody.
Keep up the good work.
Uh, all right, four point two budget updates, the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget kickoff. And I assume I'm looking at you, Roz.
Do you have any intro you want to add?
I think it's a great, uh, just, yeah, just a few words, uh, I guess, for those that are watching at home, this is, you know, um, we continue down our development of the budget for moving to the twenty four, twenty five year. We've talked to you, uh, about on a monthly basis of some of the challenges that we face. Tonight, we're going to go and give you a little bit deeper dive and think about these as big buckets of what you can see with expenditures and revenues, projected expenditures and revenues. And that hopefully will give you a little bit of sense of where we currently are, what do we know? No legislative numbers have started to come in, uh, all of our, some, not all, but mitigating strategies have started to play a role in that. And so you can get a, a sense of some of the big buckets in this. This will not be our last public conversation around that, but it gives you a chance to go a little bit deeper. So with that, I'll turn it over to Roslin. Uh, we'll probably go pretty fast, uh, in a sense, but please feel free to stop us at any time and and go from there.
Thanks, just a reminder for our viewing public, our many, many viewers at home, that, uh, the budget development guiding principles are the, the key that you have adopted at the beginning of our budget cycle last year, so two-year budget cycle, that gives us the indication of what we should be doing when we're making adjustments to the budget. The adds and subtractions from, from the future years, uh, budget. And, uh, these principles have been brought up every time the cabinet gets together, uh, I've got them printed off, I'm ready to hand them out at a moment's notice. I carry them around with me, I go to the grocery store and hand them out, whatever it takes.
And I just want to, because I've heard this numerous times, you know, this is a difficult time, right? We've, we've shared with folks, we're not alone, uh, Kristen was gracious to go to a training, uh, we're not alone in the country. Uh, today, uh, we're not alone in the state, we're not in the, and it's not an excuse, it's just a recognition that you can see from it. And so oftentimes folks will say, well, wait a second, what I heard you say is in conflict uh, to this statement on this guiding principle. And, and I appreciate that, I think sometimes we have to just be a little bit, um, a recognition that it's maybe the lesser of two evils, if you will. And, and I appreciate that. I think sometimes we have to just be a little bit, um, a recognition that it's maybe the lesser of two evils, if you will. The lesser of two evils of if not this, there would be something else. And we're trying to make decisions that are oftentimes um, in a space of saying, well, we don't throw everything up that we consider, but as we make decisions, we try to say, does this have a lesser of an impact than this in using that guiding principle? So, thank you.
So as we get into this deep dive, I, it's important to acknowledge that these are projected revenues and expenditures. There are lots of calculations and communications that are still in play. Nothing is official or finalized. We're not offering you a final budget. We're not telling you this is everything that we're going to be seeing. Uh, these numbers don't represent all the numbers and all the changes that will be occurring in the budget. There are some specific subsets that are important, large impactful components, um, and, but just please be aware that they can change and that it's not all inclusive, right? So the first part is going to be impacts to our operating budget. Now this is general fund, basic education and local support dollars. So that doesn't include our categorical programs like career and technical education or special education, Title I and LAP. Those are separate buckets that we will manage within the resources that we have available for each of those programs. This is that basic ed local pot, and that's the part that we have to make decisions on as it relates to levy and all basic education funding that comes either from the state or, um, through other local sources like taxes or charging other districts or things like that. And this is not the legislative impacts. That will actually be on the next slide. So on the revenue side of things, and I, you do see there that, that says draft, and we're still working through implications of what some of these pieces mean. Um, but, uh, there are several components that we'll, we'll have an impact for. And, and I talked about these in big buckets when we met on the twenty-eighth of March at the board meeting, but I think that it's important for you to have a clearer picture of what those things look like. So that if you have any questions or you want to, you know, you start hearing conversations out in the community that you have some awareness of what those are, and then we can dig back deeper if there are further questions that continue to, to bubble up. Uh, our enrollment impacts are basically just where our demographer has made projections to what our enrollment will look like. Levy and LEA, so we asked our voters for increases, uh, each year, uh, each subsequent year. And so we'll be increasing our levy based on what the voters approved back in twenty twenty-two. And then, um, ESER, so we know ESER will be going away. And ESER is our federal stabilization dollars for those viewing at home. Uh, this federal stabilization dollars end in this fiscal year. So in September, we will no longer be able to access those resources and we have to have them all spent and planned for. We made a plan when we got the ESER dollars that said, you know, here's what we're going to be doing with all of those resources, and we have been working to spend on that plan. Uh, as of right now, those dollars are all accounted for or intend to be accounted for. We will spend every last dollar. Um, it, and if we have to make a few moves at the end to say we need to, you know, adjust those resources, we'll be able to do that, but.
There's a national conversation right now around ex, uh, extending ESER. And so I've heard that too, is, is well, you're going to be able to extend ESER in that space. It is a state by state decision whether or not you can extend ESER. And the technicality is, is meaning you already have a contract in play. It is not designed to, as folks say, to continue to shelve some of your money and then decide later at that point. And so the states have not made their final determination. Our plan has always been to, um, spend the money on the students we have now and for, in the intent. And so we built that plan, we've communicated that plan and will maintain that plan. And so I know that I've heard rumblings and folks are like, well, there might be this opportunity and best I can tell, and maybe you heard something different, uh, today. Washington is, one, not likely to do it because most districts, I believe in Washington, have taken the original intent. That's my understanding from talking to my colleagues. Um, and so it's not relevant. And then two, it's, uh, it might be like if you had a contract already in play and you wanted to extend it potentially a month or two, but at that point it's not.
Can I just make a clarifying comment about that? Because for those listening that may not understand what extend means, no new money's coming. It would just be if you were a district who hadn't managed to spend down all your ESER money, it's use it or lose it currently. And so extending would, would give you the opportunity to spend it into the next fiscal year. And, um, and we're going to have spent it all, so it won't be relevant for us anyway, so.
That is correct. That is my understanding. Great way to put it. No new money coming.
I want to be clear about that.
Uh, and then the, the last item on here that I have is an, uh, internal impact as it relates to the operating budget is our TTK. So TTK is transition to kindergarten. Uh, you might also heard, heard it, I heard that term as transitional kindergarten. They changed the name last year and modified the program slightly, but that allows four-year-olds to participate in a kindergarten-like situation. And we receive basic education dollars for them, just like they were a kindergartner. Uh, there's some qualifying aspects to how students get into those classrooms, but, um, we are intending to expand that program and offer some preschool slots and make some modifications to our current, um, preschool programming that allows us to save some resources and be able to gain revenue. And there'll be, you'll see expenditures on the other side as it relates to these dollars. Um, it's a, it's, it's almost its own categorical program, but it lives in this basic ed, quasi-basic ed world. Um, and so what, what dollars we receive for TTK needs to be spent on TTK. And, and so that's our intent. Um, provide access to preschool, expand our programming, uh, reduce the costs that we are picking up internally and, um, offer high quality education to our youngest students.
I do have a question, um, in regarding the demographer. Has that data been, have we got, have you gotten that data back?
Oh, yeah, yeah. And he provides, he actually, I'm not sure if we've not ever provided you with his big report, but he provides us a pretty extensive report that talks through, um, you know, all of the things that he's seeing in, in a local aspect, what's happening in Pierce County, what's happening in our district, what, um, birth trends and cohorts are, are looking like and, and what we can expect to see. He provides several different scenarios, a low, medium and high scenario. We have stuck with the medium for the last, I don't know how many years, so since I've been here. Um, but you know, he has considerable accuracy minus the COVID timeframe where everything kind of went off the rails. Um, a, and so he's provided that to us back in December initially, and then gets into the specificity of by school, what the, um, demographers' projections are.
And there's a slide that will look familiar to you in the appendix, uh, for those that are watching at home too, as you can see that it, it gives you the, uh, the twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six projection and that whole, uh, and then elementary middle and high levels in that space. It's, uh, important to note that Pierce County, and you'll hear this, is Pierce County is growing. It's east Pierce County. Thousands of homes, Sumner, Bonnie Lake, Ordin, Puyallup, Bothell School Districts in there. And so, uh, that's, it may seem like a conflict when you hear about it. Wait a second, why is Tacoma's enrollment, well, we don't have large tracts of land to build new housing. And so just as a subtlety, that's, um, sometimes a, a, a challenging to hear that we're declining in, in that. But what it, we're projected to do is really kind of stabilize the next three years. So that's exciting for us.
So the meat of our entire presentation is really here on the right, um, the expenditures that we're anticipating for operating budget. Um, and I've tried to, to bucket these and categorize them, and I will try to go through them relatively quickly, but please feel free to stop me with any questions. Um, under salary impact, so this would include, uh, people moving up on the salary schedule through step increments. As you know, if each year I get a step increment, if I, if I'm eligible for that, um, it would include any kind of negotiated increases that we've made with any of our bargaining agreement staff, and it may also include the benefits associated with those higher wages. It does not include the implicit price deflator, which I have on the next slide, and the costs associated with that. Uh, so those are just maintenance level type impacts for salaries. On the staffing model impacts, so five point seven million dollars of reduced staffing model impacts. That, uh, those are in classroom teacher and in, um, other school support, administrative school support that is based off of a number of factors, which could include enrollment, um, the number of students you have in your school that are special needs or high, high impact or the complications within each school. And, and what you might notice here, and you heard the superintendent say a number of times, that we need to right-size for our enrollment. You'll see that enrollment isn't significantly changing based on the number of, of dollars that we are reducing. Um, but you see this number is changing pretty significantly, and that is speaking to the fact that we have not right-sized ourselves to the enrollment that we have been seeing. Uh, we, we tried to hold on to staff as long as we could to see if enrollment would recover because we lost a number of students, as did most districts and most of the country during the pandemic, and we didn't ever see that come back. And so now it's time to make those modifications.
And I think, you know, and we also supported learning loss in our requirement of ESERS, right? And so you can say ESER on the left and ESER on the right equates, but that wasn't the only way. So we spent ESER dollars over the course of time. And so we have to then right-size that. So the staffing is not to say that class sizes are going to be bigger because of the, our contract still requires us to meet the class size thresholds. We just have less students in certain areas. Uh, we are not planning a RIF for our classroom teachers. I would just will say it again publicly. I know that's sometimes hard, isn't that? But we are not planning a RIF. Uh, we believe that we will handle these things through attrition. Uh, we are still surveying our staff, which we are, uh, eager to do. Tell us the kind of positions you may be in because we want to try to match folks. Um, every year we have to go through a displacement process. We will go through a displacement process in that space. Um, but you know, classroom teachers, uh, you know, they'll be getting contracts here in the next couple of weeks. Uh, and we will, we're intent to help provide some stability into that.
So when you say we're not going to have any RIFs this year, that's a reduction in force?
Correct.
So that is different than a displacement, so just for the, for the public that might not know what a RIF is.
Yeah, that's, uh, thank you for pausing me there.
Uh, the building closure aspect would be for Madison and Willard Building, Buildings, where we have relocated classrooms and we are surplusing those buildings for potential sale. Operating expense, and that's the non-staff aspect of those, um, building closures. Operating expenses is sort of a hodgepodge bucket of legal, insurance, our policy twenty fifteen implications, and a number of other things that I didn't list out specifically, but, um, right around three million dollars of, of impact there of, you know, the legal bill alone is looking to be about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so. Uh, our insurance is going up about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so we've got to put some, some resources aside to pay for some of those increased costs.
And that seven hundred and fifty thousand additional for insurance is additional to repeated increases, significant increases over the last several years.
Yeah. And, and I'll say too, that these are also, when I say they're anticipated, they're anticipated. We won't know our formal legal amount until, or not legal, insurance amount until May, I think, is when we get our letter. And so, you know, we've got to put a placeholder in. They've given us an indication that there could be anywhere from an X to X percentage increase. And so we're, we're putting in our best guess as of right now, but that number could change. Um, so you'll see here we have our ESER reductions. That's, uh, offsetting all the revenues that we will be losing for our ESER. And then, um, so the increasing levy for our nutrition, our nutrition program costs more than what we are receiving in revenues. We have participated in the Community Eligibility Program, or CEP, and we are commu, participating in the Breakfast After the Bell Program. And while we have some increased revenues, we're not seeing our reimbursement rates coming back at the same level as what we would have anticipated necessar, necessarily. And food costs are increasing, labor costs have increased. And so we're not able to make, uh, uh, we're not able to balance a program from that. That's not new. This has actually been something that we have not addressed for a number of years now. And so our intent is, as we're working to right-size our budget and make sure that we have the resources that we need for a long-term sustained budget, we've got to fix the upside-down aspect of it. We're working hard on the program side of things to ensure that we're being as efficient and effective as we can be. We're going to, we're working on trying to find ways to source food differently and to make sure that we have appropriate staff at each of the sites. Um, but that's going to still need to be balanced with the fact that we've got to insert revenues there, or what happens is we end up overspending that program and we're not planned for it appropriately.
So I, I want to maybe, uh, offer some alternatives in language, right? We make a value statement by saying that we are going to prioritize students having breakfast on campus and, uh, food, lunch in there. Um, that is, uh, and what Roslin's saying is, is, uh, we have to make sure that we plan to the best of our knowledge, which means we have to make reductions in other places. And so what we haven't done is always said, hey, we think it's going to be X number of dollars. And we've seen now, because the program, I would push on us a little bit, it has been relatively new, the volume. And we have a realistic number of that. And you can see that local levy dollars are having to be spent on that. So, you know, the board could say, absolutely not. We don't believe that kids should have meals in, in that space.
Of course, he's going to frame it like that.
Yeah.
And I say that with, it, there is, there is local school districts that don't do that. They choose not to put there in there. We know that this is a value of yours when you look at the guiding principles. And so we're pointing this to you to say that yes, and there is an increased cost in that to the tune of four point two million dollars that you should just recognize as you're talking with state legislators and others and saying, is this a basic right that we believe that children should have in our communities, knowing that there is inflation, unemployment? I was at the United Way event today around, uh, housing. Uh, there are so many pressures on our families that this is the right thing to do, but it is coming at a cost.
I have a question about the nutrition cost. Um, were, weren't, I mean, I, in my mind, I thought ESER funds were used to help cover some of the food costs, the nutrition costs for these food programs.
Sure.
Correct?
Yes.
And with the, with the elimination of them, which is why, like, I think like, when you were talking about, we haven't addressed those issues, well, it's because of ESER allowed the programs to continue as they were, correct?
I think it's a component of it, yes. I don't think that it's the full value of that.
Yeah, okay. I think it's safe. It's a moving piece too. I think that, you know, I would just pause this is, you charge us to make sure that we have a balanced budget. These are projections, right? And so, uh, based on trend data, based on what we think, this is what we think we need to add to make sure the nutrition service is, is whole. Otherwise, we'd be in a situation where if we don't plan for it next year, uh, we would have to make reductions in mid-year. And what I would say to you is, is that doesn't mean that food costs can't rise next year. And that's, we still may have to do some of those situations. So these, it's important for me to at least give the staff a little bit of cover to say, this is the base case scenario, meaning that if we can predict at some level.
Uh, the next two lines are, are levy to transportation. So this is adding additional resources in order to cover our transportation costs. This is something where we're seeing, and Josh's point, uh, the superintendent's point of what we just talked about nutrition. It's very similar on the, the transportation side, and we went and lobbied and asked for additional resources to help cover transportation that we knew were underfunded. Fuel costs more, the contract costs more. We're, we're working towards trying to achieve efficiencies and operational efficiencies in, in order to bring those costs down. But, you know, the, those are things that we have to balance out and we have to build, uh, resources for them. So if we do nothing, we would need to add one point eight million dollars. But you'll see the next line down with the tiered transportation service, uh, aspect. This is what was brought to you at the last board meeting, uh, where the team suggested that we would potentially, um, do a tiered elementary supports, uh, for our, our elementary transportation services and change our bell tines. And with that would result, uh, in an offset of what the resources that we would need to add in order to maintain the program. So.
We have, uh, we have sent out, uh, uh, some news communication to all of our families. We've been notifying partners. And, uh, inside that news communication, there's an email to send us some feedback. So I'm just encouraging folks, every opportunity, let us know. Uh, we're taking, collecting all that feedback and, uh, so that we can see what may be some potential impacts that we are not aware of. And that will give us an opportunity to adjust if needed, or help us affirm that the plan may have some opportunities in that. So, um, as you're helping spread the word and you're demystifying this, the question I get is, is this a done deal? No, it's proposed. It's proposed. We're gathering the feedback along the way as we build the model. We still haven't been able to determine, but you can tell that we have to do something. And so there may be some tweaks or that may, folks may say, okay, I can live with this enough in that space.
So under the facilities and maintenance line, uh, our expectation is that we have, we're behind on some preventative maintenance. One dollar spent on preventative maintenance prevents three dollars of cost. I've heard that somewhere. I don't have an actual solid figure, but you know, let's, let's call it a pretty good number. Uh, the, it prevents three dollars worth of cost later on. And so we want to make sure that we are maintaining our buildings and providing enough resources in order to be able to do that effectively. Because the, the classrooms where it all happens anyway. Uh, levy to athletics is a similar situation where we have, um, found ourselves in a situation where athletics is costing more than it used to. And a lot of that has to do with the salaries and costs of, of coaching, uh, our students in the athletic programs. And so we will need to right-size that as well.
We are exploring a pay-as-you-choose model, very similar to the Beyond the Bell and Club B, which is, uh, there is no requirement to participate in paying. Um, but there is this idea that, uh, and we've seen this, uh, like I said, with the, the Beyond the Bell program is this, um, it's, on average, it's about five hundred dollars per kid to participate in athletics. And most South Sound districts, you, you pay as a, uh, if you're, for your child to participate. And so, uh, the Beyond the Bell model is, is that we communicate that. We offer families, if you'd like and you have the resources, here's some suggested prices as you contribute. here's some suggested prices as you contribute. It has resulted in some revenue for the partners to offset some of those costs. It's not a full-fledged model. We're exploring what would that look like, but no decisions have been made. And no, even in Beyond the Bell and Club B and as we explore the model, our intent is not to have a required payment piece. So we clearly articulate to the families for... It doesn't matter if you meet a certain threshold from your income, because we know that sometimes times are just tough and seasons are just tough. And so the message is, if you choose to pay as you choose.
Is that estimate $500 per student per sport or per sport?
Yep, approximately. Some sports cost more and, you know, I'm not going to go down that list of...
That's the uniform and the...
Equipment, referees, transportation, field maintenance. It's in that... And the great news is this year, we had the highest, this spring, we had the highest participation in athletics, in high school athletics. I mean, the fields are just jamming and popping and we want them. We want them all. We haven't even been able to start to catch up to measure. I think every play I've heard has been at full capacity. I mean, we can run major theater companies. And it's a gift. And it's a gift in that. And so we have to figure out ways that we can continue to plan and do better or we have to cap in that space. So we had some local foundation support to offer four C teams this year that we were going to have to turn in the spring, a couple of baseball, a soccer, and something else. We had to make a decision. You know, we had to go and knock on doors under the current financial crisis to say, hey, would you be willing to help us? Or we were going to turn away approximately 50 to 60 kids back and saying, there's no space for you. And we're not there yet. We're not... But we're... We've got to keep on pressing in that space. Either having foundational support to help this, maybe a combination of this, and we're going to have to use local levy dollars to help support it.
The next two lines sort of go together. The TTK program expansion, as I said, there was the expenditure component that goes along with revenues that we'll receive. And our intent is that we will be able to provide services differently for our special needs students who participate in the peer program, and that will result in a savings for us. It does not mean that we are taking away slots for kids. We're going to be expanding our preschool opportunities. But this is just a way for us to shift costs around and provide the services a little differently.
Question. So with the TTK program expansion, how many additional children are we?
I thought it was like 750 or 700.
Seven is a lot of little people.
Yeah, I don't...
But it's not necessarily new slots, because we provide the services now for some of our students under the peer model program. And so we would shift students from the peer model program over to the TTK.
Okay.
Right.
And we still have some ECAP Head Start programming. And remember, we had to reduce some slots there. And so it's a little bit in there, but we believe that we're going to be able to serve more students. And I'll just... This is, our intent is not to take away from community seats. And I think that's just important that we continue to remind us is, you know, when I think about a cohort of kids on a given year of 26,000, you can probably rough math, think somewhere between 2,200 and 2,500 kids per grade level as they come through the system. And that's headcount, as I'm looking over at my friend who reminds me of headcount does not equal FTE and all those accounting pieces, right? And we're nowhere near that. But in the absence of the community being in a place where they can provide those seats, there seems to be a demand that we need to continue to lean in and so.
I don't know. I think I have trepidation about... I know we had to reduce ECAP slots because ECAP, the legislature did some stuff, okay? And so like the half-day slots are kind of going away. We're moving into full-day ECAP slots. We have a bunch of half-day programs. All those programs become full-day programs, reducing our slots. But that means ECAP-eligible children become TTK's children, which a bunch of early learning advocates, we've been talking to the state about. And we're saying if they're ECAP-eligible, there are services that you get in ECAP that you don't get in TTK, right? That wraparound family support, that parent education component and all those types of things. And then you have TTK students who still need those things. And then the teachers and their contracts. And we're saying, who's going to provide those services? And then we've got people going over and above and beyond to try to provide services that people need because they're ECAP-eligible. But like you said, in Pierce County, we do not have the infrastructure for community-based programs to have the ECAP slots. There's not a lot of contractors in Pierce County other than PSESD, which is servicing us and our ECAP. But again, as we reduce ECAP slots and we increase TTK, we still have families in need. So, I mean, like, kudos to us for doing it, but also just like being really cognizant of the children who will get the services are actually ECAP-eligible.
Correct. And I will double-check. I do not believe that we are reducing beyond any ECAP and Head Start than we presented to you a couple of months ago.
No, no, you're not going to. But I'm just letting you know, it is happening. And it's statewide.
I appreciate that.
All the early learning.
I appreciate your clarity as well.
They told us. They were like, it's coming for you.
Yeah, I hear you.
The next two lines here are position eliminations. So we have identified a number of positions. You've seen some of that already in play. There have been some adjustments in the 23, 24 school year that we're in the middle of right now that we'll roll in and carry forward. And then there are some additional positions that will be eliminated. And some of those have been communicated and some of them have not yet been communicated, but will be as we're continuing to progress through this. Discretionary reductions are reductions that we're making to individual budgets. You know, my budget will be reduced. Malink's budget will be reduced. Sorry, Malink. Josh and Lisa's budgets will be reduced.
Everybody does, is reductions.
So we'll have a number of reductions that we'll be making. And then we have a process in place now, because we've done this already in the current school year, where, you know, if a budget has come into a position where somebody needs to pay for something and it's outside of their budget capacity that they have availability for, there's a place to apply and those go through the budget team and myself. And then we make a determination and an allocation if necessary so that we have a source of resources for them.
I hear this idea of discretionary is, well, you've had this money in there. So I need to unpack discretionary means as discretionary, meaning each department has the authority to identify contracts that they may establish in order to advance, in order to advance the work to help us achieve our strategic plan goals. It is not a bucket of money that is, that just sits there in that space. It's you... We will all feel it. Our partners will feel it and some of those contracts will be reduced because we have to reduce that. It is a very significant piece. And if it wasn't this, it would be more people in that space, because there are additional beyond, you all know this, beyond the prototypical school model, the Tacoma Public still funds people in that space. And it's a tough reality and we feel like it's the right thing to do, especially when you talk about those guiding principles of farthest from the classroom. And so I feel comfortable about it. But it will have impacts. There will be less things that we are able to support. There will be less materials out there per se. And we'll continue to advocate and find ways. But it's very important that we all take a moment to recognize that that is a significant dollar amount when you think about that in comparison to everything else. And it is very much needed that we have to reshape some of the things that we do business, because we need as many adults as possible to build meaningful relationships with the kids in there. It is not a wholesale, everyone will do this. It is an approach that now each one of the departments, including Lisa and I's budget, every department is going through this process.
The next two lines are shifts over to capital. So we have some resources that we are using in basic education that we are going to use capital resources to pay for. We've got some that are happening in the 23, 24 school year. And then we'll have some additional ones that'll happen in the 24, 25 school year. And you'll see there's a note there that says for library and instructional coaches. It's important to note that that's not a reduction in staff for those particular dollars, that those are just changing the funding source that will be utilized for those dollars. And then there's the average salary adjustment. We made some modifications to our budget last year in order to balance, and we have to repay those back. So this is going to put us in a position where the dollars that we are actually spending on the resources are what we're budgeting to. And then there's the repaying of the fund balance. And it's important to note on the $9.7 million of the repaying of the fund balance, that would get us to $26 million roughly. The, you know, the target sort of changes as we get different revenues coming in, because it's based off of our revenues, percentage of our revenues. But to get to that 5% reserve requirement and adding that 9.7 in requires us to actually end this year at $18 million. And so we're working to try to achieve that. We have come up with a plan in order to repay the fund balance with the expectation of being within the policy of this is the plan. We may or may not hit that target. This is our best guess at this point in time. We may exceed the target. We may be short on the target. But this is where we're at now and we know that we need to plan and accommodate this.
So I'm going to pause this because there's a lot there. And within each of this, there's individual work plans. These are large buckets, right, in that space. And so what is important is you see that we can anticipate right now, based on our numbers, is $9.9 million of decreasing in revenue. And what you see on this is our plan to reduce, including paying fund balance back, which we are required to build you a plan to do so, a reduction of expenditures by 9.96. So we can then jump to the next one. And then I promise, I know we've thrown a lot at you, but most of it after that is more of a recap of other things.
These numbers are actually numbers that you've already seen in our presentation, from the financial presentation last week, or last board meeting. So I don't think I need to go into them in depth. But we did get about $13.4 million worth of new revenues in from the legislature, or that's our anticipation. Again, we just got the tool to, our calculator tool, to identify whether these revenues are on target or not on Wednesday. And so we're still plugging through those numbers. And then the expenditures associated with those particular items are around $10 million. So this is the net of $3 million from the legislature, which is great news. It didn't cost us. It's not a great windfall. It's not like we can go out and buy Lotto tickets with it. But we are in a better place, a better position related to that. On the next slide, other budget considerations. This is also a slide that you saw last time. Just a note that it is our intent to provide you with a balanced budget. You have an expectation of that. We have an expectation of that. And so that is the intent that we are working towards. But it's not just a balanced budget for this next cycle. We're trying to balance our budget for the future, for the next five years. Our budget work is ongoing. We're still working on current strategies in the 24, 25 year that will continue to assist in the 24, 25 balancing of the budget. We have identified our legislative impacts. We're working through the calculations of all the staff and expenditures. And then we work through the balancing aspects next. So we're getting closer to identifying that balanced budget. We may still have additional resources that we need to find or additional adjustments that need to be made in the budget as we process through. But, you know, these are things that we're, it's still in flux, I guess, is the best way for me to go about saying that. And then on the administrative side of the House, I updated this slide. As I said in our last presentation, this number will continue to change. It was at 199 the last time. I showed you this slide. Now we're down to 197. I suspect that it will continue to decline. And then at the end of the year, it'll probably be closer to 188, 187, somewhere around there. But it is still currently at 5.6% of our staff is where our administrative number is falling, on staff number.
So I want to just unpack that, too. That does not mean that these are all exempt staff. This is, they represent a variety of labor groups. These are all very important people. And I know that it's very easy to say, we'll just reduce administration. You can see that we have made those steps. But these are not all exempt staff, okay?
We still have opportunities for people to participate in our budgeting process. The budget calculator is still out on our website and available for anybody who would like to understand more about our budget. Play a little with the budget. You can go in and you can submit your comments and questions on all sorts of spaces on our budget calculator, as well as, you know, suggest reductions or eliminations in order to make modifications to the budget. You know, it's a little bit of a play tool, but you can submit it back to us. And we will be capturing those commentaries and providing them back to the board.
Can I just ask, do we have any idea how, if anyone's using it or?
I, yeah, three people, yeah. So please.
Three submissions.
Okay.
Three hundred and sixty-five.
Oh, that's good. So lots of views. Maybe people are working on it. It's complicated.
Yes.
I mean, the tool isn't complicated. The process of figuring out what you want to spend the money on and how to reduce is complicated.
Since March 15-ish.
About that long, okay.
When is it close? Yeah, sorry.
We don't have a closing date at this point. I mean, we're happy to leave it up until we're ready to do something different with it.
We're constantly monitoring it, you know, and looking at what is that, the suggestions in there. The Tacoma Public Schools' anticipated revenue next year is approximately what?
$548 million.
It is one of the largest companies in the county. And we look for folks, and I say this so that they can have a little freedom to... We're not looking for folks to come into the calculator and say, I need to understand every aspect of that. When you turn in the final reconciled budget, how many pages do you think it is?
Over 100.
And we post it online. We want folks to know and stuff. But it, you know, if you don't have a background in it, it may be somewhat intimidating in that space. And so we've tried to design the budget calculator. And I give big kudos to Kristin and her leadership in trying to make it as user-friendly. There's companies that help us. We're looking for those big bucket ideas, not for folks to say, hey, or to feel obligated. They're welcome to say whatever they like, but not to feel obligated that they have to feel the pressure of balancing all these pieces in that space. And then you have things like the capital budget, which is in approximately another year, on a yearly basis, what do we think the construction capital budget is?
It's around $150 million.
And then you have the instructional technology capital budget approximately?
Another 30 million.
So you can see that it becomes a very comprehensive, complex piece of that. And so I just say that in the spirit of, if folks get online and they're like, this is too much for me, just do what you feel comfortable and share those things. And we're monitoring those data pieces and saying, okay, are we learning something? What is there, is there trends? We're not asking people to vote, right? We're asking them to provide their inputs, their values. What do they see? What are those nuggets that they're looking for? So I really hope folks can continue to share that.
Moving on to our last slide, just to note that we'll be bringing forward our preliminary final budget to the May 23 budget, excuse me, board meeting. We will launch a video sometime in the end of May there. We'll have a formal budget hearing, which is required by law before we adopt, on June 6. And then June 20 would be our slated adoption. And then before I hand it over to you for questions, I would just ask if Kari or Kristin have any commentary that they want to add? Okay, great. Thank you. I'm happy to entertain any questions. Any question? Any thoughts?
I know that next month, you're going to be presenting a budget to us. I feel like I'm really well-versed in listening and learning at these study sessions about the budget. I love the budget calculator feature. It's always something I like to share on my personal Facebook and like tell people like, hey, just try it out. But, yeah, when you open it up, seeing that part right there, it says, you are in a deficit. So that's how you're going to start budgeting for the first time ever for this multimillion-dollar organization. I know, I have a lot of questions. Thank you all for the time and effort you put into this. And also, like, I think it's not lost on me that when we are talking about reducing budgets and letting go of people, people are losing their jobs and just... It might seem callous sometimes when we're just talking about the budget. And I like that you brought the fact that it's not just exempt staff. It's all types of staff that are being impacted by a deficit, which we are in, according to the calculator, right there. It starts right there.
And we're committed, and you've heard us, and they may seem like small wins. We're committed to finding jobs whenever appropriate. We're committed to offering alternative jobs. They may not always be ideal, and I recognize that. But it is a deep commitment that we try to take the best of our care of our team as much as we possibly can. And so we continue to, you know, to hold back on posting positions that may be there next year until we can ensure that there's nobody in the current system that can take that position in that space. I think we've been offered a lot of grace and patience by a lot of folks in our community I think we've been offered a lot of grace and patience by a lot of folks in our community and a lot of our staff. And I want to thank them for that and that. And I understand that sometimes it's, uh, difficult to hear some of these things. So we will continue to operate in that space, uh, the best we can. And then my last comment to you is, is, and I'll say it on your behalf, is that each of you spend time with me, with Roslin, uh, asking a lot of questions behind the scenes. Uh, there may be limitations to what we can share because of labor laws or the decision made is there. But you have not taken formal actions behind the scenes, but you are gathering lots of knowledge. Tell me more about this. What is this category of funding look like? Tell me why this, uh, recommendation here or that. And so, um, I just want to applaud you for your homework in these. And I know sometimes you get to these and you've already asked 30 questions, uh, in that space and, and that's okay.
Anything else? And I guess I would want to build on, like, and it isn't just, um, there's a whole, there's a large effort to advocate for resources year-round. It isn't just during a legislative session. Um, I mean, just the, the grant applications that are continually being sought after. And there's just like, um, continual work that goes into identifying resources in as many areas as possible. And, um, I've, I've been thinking a lot about unseen work. And there's just a lot of unseen work that happens that when people maybe come and, um, come to a board meeting and they see a presentation like last Thursday's or the previous budget presentations, they don't, um, it is, it's not possible to demonstrate all of the work that, and, and conversations and advocacy and questions and just the effort that goes into trying to, to understand, um, the budget, understand our resources. What do we have? What are the gap? Where are the gaps? Where do we, how do we, um, either creatively or maybe more forcefully, um, advocate for, for, um, needs for our students? And so that, I just have thought a lot about, um, you know, there's just an, a lot of unseen work that happens at the board level and with our staff at all levels, honestly. And so, um, I want to echo, echo, um, Director McElroy's thanks for your presentation and time. And, um, I know there's a lot of effort that goes into a presentation like this, particularly for a study session. So thank you.
All right. Was the team effort? Big team.
Yeah, big team. And, and once again, I kudos to the financial folks, but you know, cross-departmental team, right? We meet with principals, communications, Dr. Nolan plays a huge role, team HR, uh, in this. And so, um, I just want to take a moment to say thank you for that, to recognize the entire team and, um, it's a heavy burden. And, uh, it's, uh, a lot of things. So I would just say thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Cool. Thank you.
Kudos.
All right. Well, with that, we are adjourned.
Thanks, team.